Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the first evening meeting of the Board of Supervisors of 2017. I know that I had to purchase espresso and coffee drinks for my two elder colleagues as they are both past their bedtime. So I made sure they're awake and made it here safely and look forward to this meeting this evening. So first thing that we will take up is we are going to stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by the District One Supervisor who represents the City Supervisor Crocker.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first item on our agenda this evening is Board of Supervisors Matters, and I will look to the eldest member of the board to kick this off, Mr. Ennis.
Well, I really don't have much to say tonight, other than we're continuing to get the D.C. GSA in place, and the last thing on the agenda was to appoint the members to White Area, so we're doing that. So we should be a body where we can move forward to our next meeting, which is about the middle of this month. So that, and, you know, Success Dam is continuing forward with Mr. McCarthy's help and his staff. We continue to move to get the spillway maybe enlarged a little bit, but then the gates put in so we can store 110,000 acre feet instead of 82.5. And I'm also hearing that they are trying to get the spillway sandbag this year so that we could store maybe 100,000 acre feet this year because the runoff up there, according to what I'm hearing, is over twice the capacity of the lake still setting up there in the mountains. So very critical. Great year, you know, we're not complaining. We just hope that the good Lord works with us and keeps that snow up there where we can take advantage of it, all of it, and everybody benefit from it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Water Prophet. We will now move on to Supervisor Lindsey, I mean Supervisor Crocker going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yesterday, we had a town hall meeting and successful event, provided just some general updates that the community was concerned about, primarily over a, I don't even want to use the term proposed because it's not really proposed, but a possible hotel project up there. Last week, there were a couple of great events. California Citrus Mutual had their annual citrus showcase, and the lunch was hosted by some of the major industry leaders, head of Sunkist, Wonderful Citrus, Sun Pacific, and Beesweet, and they all were very optimistic on this year's market. So as a grower, I'm very pleased with that possibility, but I think Maryland later on will have maybe some more sombering issues as far as what we're going to see in the future on Huang Long Bing. And then today, we had an East Cuyahoga GSA meeting, and next week, we'll have a Greater Cuyahoga GSA meeting, and I, you know, we've had some overlap issues, but it seems to me that there's a lot of progress being made as resolving that, and I'm very pleased over that. So with that, I will turn it over to Chair.
All right, Supervisor Worthy.
Thank you, Chairman. Last Wednesday, a group of us met up at the site of Temperance Flat, my first time actually being on the site, the location where they proposed to build the dam, and we had the Assistant Bureau of Recreation Director that was there just before we left for Washington, DC. It was his first time there. We had a meeting afterwards. He's very supportive of the Temperance Flat project, and as has been all the way, we've had great encouragement from the bureaus to move forward on this project and attempt to seek funding from the Prop 1 funds and also from the federal government. On Friday night, Woodlake Chamber of Commerce was, had their annual event, well-attended, and always a lot of fun to be in Woodlake with the folks there and honor people and businesses who have done exceptional things in the last year. And then this coming Thursday, I will be, have a CSAC regional meeting in Bakersfield on a water panel there. On the panel with me will be the California Water Commission President, my first opportunity to actually interact with the individuals. They are the folks who will be making the decision about allocation of the Prop 1 funds, $2.7 billion, which are allocated for storage projects, and so I look forward to that opportunity at the last.
All right, Supervisor Shekley.
Yes, last Friday, I participated and celebrated Dr. Seuss's birthday by reading to three different classes at Royal Oak School, so that was a lot of fun.
How old is he?
Uh, Dr. Seuss, he's...
115.
He just celebrated his birthday, you don't remember?
I don't know, he did, so I didn't keep track after that, so, um...
That's not...
What's that?
Nothing.
Rudy's got a nap.
I think him and Mike went to school together, right?
He had a far more successful career than Mike.
Yeah. Yesterday, we had a veterinarian from UC Davis Outreach. She handles shelter medicine there and gave us a very nice presentation to animal services regarding feral cats and how we may be dealing with that issue in the future for animal services. Last night, I attended the Visalia City Council meeting, and they selected Councilman Bob Link to serve as their representative on our homeless task force. So if we start getting folks on there, we can move along on that. And that's it.
Well, I'm sure glad you're passionate about feral cats.
I'm not, but...
All right.
Someone's got to do it.
There's no jury.
Someone's got to do it.
All right, a couple of things I wanted to go over. I don't want to steal Bill Harrison's thunder coming in a little bit, but I was going to talk about the CV tech and make a plug for that, but I'll let Bill go into those details in a few minutes. I will be speaking at the first-ever Cherry Avenue Career Day. Cherry Avenue is a middle school in Tulare. It happens to be my alma mater. I graduated in the class of 1998, so it's been a little while since I've been back to the campus, but I'm very excited to go and participate in their first Career Day, and it's a great thing to expose youth to the careers that are out there in this world for them at a very young age. I'm hoping that I will be able to make it to the CSAC conference on Thursday, but I'm hoping that I'll miss the panel that Worthy speaks on.
The last one in the afternoon.
I'm kidding. And then lastly, a last thing I wanted to highlight is that Grandma's House, a very successful nonprofit in the city of Tulare, has done a lot of after-school youth programs for the youth in and around the Tulare community, is going to be opening their first-ever preschool. That is going to take place after a ribbon-cutting that takes place at 4:00 in Tulare at their location on 226 South Blackstone. Congratulations to that program, and I wish them a lot of success. They have a tremendous impact on the youth that they serve. With that, that concludes Board of Supervisors Matters. Now, I'll move on to item number two on our agenda, and that is public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Is there anybody here wishing to speak under public comment? Public comment can and will be limited to two, three minutes. I have one, two requests. First is from Mr. Jim Dreger.
Good evening, everyone. A little follow-up on my meeting that I had previous to nights. In regards to ambulance service, specifically in Area 1, I've had a good response via the phone and many qualified people talking about the problem that I encountered, and they would delve into it and get back to me. Probably the longest conversation was with a Mr. Dotson, who has given me a lot of time and a current concern. The issue tonight that I have is still, we have things that need to be fixed, and need to be fixed quickly in regards to street signs here in Lindsay, especially. And I would like to say that I've talked with the city manager here about this concern and keep pushing things his way and see what we can do. I also was surprised to see an article in the paper recently, that, a story about the Lindsay Hospital District funding ambulance for local people in Area 1. And I'm happy to see that. I don't know how things are going to be paid for. I am not delved into, I'm not a revenue that's going to be needed to support that ambulance. And as far as I am concerned, ambulances don't have any boundaries. So I need to know what's going to happen, so I'll be meeting with somebody in the near future concerning those issues. I have not met with Supervisor Crocker for whatever reason, I didn't know. I'm still looking forward to a phone call, and I suppose that will come shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. If you're looking for a supervisor to talk to, I know Supervisor Shekley is around all the time, so you're welcome to give her a call too.
Well, you know, if she's the only woman, I'll take her.
Thank you for your comments. I have another request from Bill Harrison. Do you need your flyer back, or do you know enough about it?
No, I knew when you mentioned it. Just checking. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board, C.A.L. and County Council, and everybody from the city of Lindsay. I am Bill Harrison. I'm the Assistant Director of Tulare County Information and Computer Technology. I'm here to remind you that tomorrow is the Central Valley Technical Fair, which is an event sponsored by Tulare County with the goal of bringing tech firms here to the Valley and showing them that there is a market here. We will have, all of the cities of the county will be represented there, several of the surrounding counties will be there, some school districts will be showing up. And it's just a way to try, you know, we're that blank spot between Bakersfield and Fresno often, and this is a way to get firms that into this area and to see that they can sell to us and that we are interested in that technology. It's a way of growing ourselves beyond what we are right now. So the event starts at 9:00 a.m. in the morning. Mr. Spada will be saying a few kind words to kick it off, and we'll be introducing Sheriff Pudero, who will be talking about the very exciting things that they are doing, their DNA water that they use in agricultural crime, and his efforts with drones, and he's doing some very exciting things with that and with other technologies. Then we will have an open house event with about 22 vendors selling products. The public is certainly invited to attend. And we will have classes for county employees, city employees. We will also have presentations by the vendors of their products in the classroom.
Any questions? Thank you for the report. Does anyone else wish to speak under public comment?
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Renee Salazar. I live at 495 North Elm, which is down the street, a couple blocks from here. Thank you for being here. I want to start off by saying I'm proud to be a first-generation American Mexican. My parents immigrated here in the '70s, and out of that, two of my sisters became teachers. Right now, there's, we live in Tulare County where immigration with undocumented workers is something that I urge the count, the Board Supervisors, to address more. I know that Visalia PD, the Chief of Police, Tulare Chief of Police, the Sheriff, they all made, they all expressed that they're here to protect the community regardless of their status. Even the city of Lindsay also came out a week ago stating that they're here to protect no matter what the status is. However, I live here, I see, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of going on, a lot of rumors going on, like there's rumors that, you know, there's raids going on at the local Bayata store. There's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors going on, and this kind of is starting to be more like, you know, it's starting to affect people, and people are not going to go out, you know? And I just, I'm here to urge you to try to do something to address it, to try to calm the fears down of people regardless of their status, you know? Because regardless, they still contribute to this county, you know? I mean, they work at the fields, you know? I worked at the fields, and I've met a lot of people who are undocumented and contribute, you know? So I'm just here to tell you that if you, that there's a way or there's something that can be done, maybe a hotline or maybe something that kind of will calm the fears down of people, you know, because it's real, you know? And people who are, who've been here for years that no longer want to go out, that's going to cost, what's that going to, what's that going to cost to the economy, to a local economy? So I'm just here to say that if you guys could please, I urge you to try to do something to calm those fears of the people of Tulare County. Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Pam, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Board Supervisors with Mr. Spada and County Council. My name is Pamela Kimball, and I'm Mayor of Lindsay, and I live at 970. I just wanted to come up and welcome you all to our city, and especially anyone here who maybe hasn't been to our, to our historic, iconic city hall before. Hope you enjoy being here tonight, being in our city. And this is just too good of an opportunity to pass up, not speaking about a couple of events coming up. The Lindsay Museum, which is just right here between City Hall and the PD Department, serves the best corned beef and cabbage on St. Patrick's Day. So I invite you all to come back Friday between 5:00 and 7:00 and get a really great Irish dinner. And we also have green beer and Irish coffee, if that's what it takes. So, and then, of course, we have our 85th Annual Lindsay Orange Blossom Festival, which is a week-long. Festivity begins April 1st and goes through April 8th. Parade being on April 8th. You hope our supervisor is going to be in the parade? You haven't thought about that? You need to think about that.
They better have a really high float.
That's right.
So it can be visible to the public.
Well, he may have to provide his own vehicle, but we'd love to have...
I'm sure somebody has a jacket.
Well, I know of you. But it's a, it's a great day, April 8th here in Lindsay with the blossoms blooming, and I invite everybody in the room here to come out. And again, thank you for being here tonight. Thanks for the folks.
Any additional comments? Okay. Do you have another question? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Eric Sinclair. I'm a resident here in Lindsay, California, and I'm, my continued journey on running for City Council here in Lindsay, California, and giving my support, and I'm in total support of Heather Crocker, I have already phoned, and I'm in total support of our law enforcement, local law enforcement, and I stand behind the law enforcement, and I would say thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comments? All right, seeing now, we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the Board of Supervisors to take up the consent calendar. Item number five will be pulled from the consent calendar for correction, and item number three will be pulled as well, just for a separate vote. Any additional items to be removed from consent or voted on separately by members of the board?
What's the correction on number five? Have you got that?
What's that? Yeah, that's why we're going to pull that for just the corrections. We'll pull three and five.
Oh, okay.
So...
Move for approval.
Okay, so we have...
Motion for approval of a balance of consent.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Worthy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is going to be an item that I will recuse myself from, so Supervisor Worthy, I'll turn that over. And the other reason I'm recusing myself from this, no benefit to anybody here, but my sister is being nominated to serve on the Health Advisory Committee, and just for the appearance of conflict, I'm going to be recusing myself from that.
Move for approval.
Aye.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ennis, a second by Supervisor Shekley. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the saying. Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Vice Chair. Did a good job, but one time you'll ever be called on during my administration. We will now move on to item number five on the agenda, which is pulled for some clarification. Robert?
Chairman, members of the board. The item for you is the one having to do with bidding on a piece of real estate, that is the leasing of this real estate. The bid opening date on your item says April 4th, and should be March 28th is the title. That's the only change.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No, move for approval.
Second, motion by Supervisor Ennis, and second by Supervisor Shekley. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. All right, that concludes the consent calendar. We will now move on to item number 11, which is a presentation from the Agricultural Commissioner regarding the Asian citrus sillid and a serious plant disease called Huang Long Bing. Is that okay? That's great. All right. Marilyn.
Thank you, Chairman. The Asian citrus sillid is becoming established in Tulare County. It's difficult to detect because it's about 2 millimeters long, and it's about the size of an aphid that you find in a vegetation. In 1998, it was found first in the United States of Florida, and in the past 19 years, the juice industry in Florida is just crumbling. The juice plants are, you know, having trouble maintaining a steady flow of product coming in because of the Asian citrus sillid vectors, a very harmful disease. So it's got a very distinctive look when it feeds, its mouthparts are towards the end up against the flush growth. It causes a lot of mess when it feeds. The nymphs will feed, and then they, you know, what comes in has to go out. It has this very characteristic, um, frass that it's, yeah, it's insect poop. And you can imagine that to a commercial or retail nursery, let's say, south of the grapevine, they're heavily infested with sillids, so you get that, you know, some white ugly stuff, and they take their mouthparts, which has a toxin in it, and it'll actually snip off the tender shoots. So when a retail nursery gets product, they normally, like a big box store, doesn't have a staff that is allowed to use pesticides. They don't have the training, and it's just difficult. They usually get product in and they keep the product until it's sold. So if it's infested, you know, that ends up wherever with the consumer that it's sold to. And this was actually a photo of one of the trees that was pretty heavily infested in Lindsay. It was a couple of years ago. The homeowner had trees, and he commented that they weren't growing very well, but it's because of that constant attack on the fresh growth, and they were lemons, so they tend to flush more. We've got 10 fully quarantined counties for Asian citrus sillid. Fresno was the last one to become fully quarantined because most of their citrus acreage was, you know, within one of those five-mile quarantines that kept bumping out. We've got 19 that are partially infested. The very farthest north spot up in Placer County came when just a resident of the city decided to buy citrus trees in Southern California, put them in a pot in her yard. So they've got a small, you know, mountain mandarin acreage up there, but now they're under quarantine because of a goofy mistake that somebody shouldn't have made. What the sillid's vector is Huang Long Bing, like Supervisor Vanderpoel said, and it is a death sentence to any citrus tree that becomes affected. And the sillids, which are important, they're very strong flyers, so they could infest one hop to another, and we don't know until it's too late because the sampling is done on a regular basis throughout California, but the testing method that the USDA, United States Department of Ag, uses is, it's not the best. They're always, they're doing research to look for a better sampling method, but it produces these asymmetrical splotches. Normally, a leaf, you know, it has a mid-rib, and what you see on the left side should be what you have on the right side, and it's just not the case with trees that are infested with HLB. This is a tree just out in somebody's yard that has Huang Long Bing, and this is something that we have homeowners bring in. They bring them in bags, they're very respectful, they know the rules about bringing insects and plants that have to be in this contained bag, but, you know, that's nutrient deficiency. So our staff biologist will either inform them or have them go over to UC Cooperative Extension to get some information about how to fertilize properly, but we'd rather have nutrient-deficient citrus trees than HLB-infested trees anyway. But this is the important part where the citrus becomes deformed, it's sour, it's bitter, and it becomes unusable. And this is what Florida has. Currently, in California, we've got 38 positive trees for HLB, and they were removed very quickly, but the hacienda heights in San Gabriel area is the two areas. So the secretary has authority to remove those trees, no questions about it. She's got a positive test, and what's, the neat part about this is the USDA will bring in an organization called Smuggling Interdiction of Trade, and they do interviews, they look at passports, they will take the homeowners, if there's more than one there, and interview them separately, you know, want to know their whereabouts, and these trees are, we always try to get the homeowners' cooperation because that's the way you're going to continue to have them call and tell you, hey, I think I've got a problem. Can you look at it? So through the Citrus Pest and Disease Committee, they've offered cherry trees, you know, some other type of fruit-growing tree or a couple cartons of citrus. They thank them profusely for their cooperation, but, you know, that's the way to keep people There's been a great deal of work on an insect that comes from Pakistan, and it was found, it's a Tamarixia stinging wasp, and throughout this wasp lifetime, when it's released in the neighborhoods, it can kill thousands of Asian citrus sillids. So in Southern California, well, actually, in the state of California, we know where every positive location is for an Asian citrus sillid. So, you know, south of the grapevine... So, you know, south of the grapevine, you know, they're just speckled candy on a map. And researchers will systematically place, you know, vials of these beneficial wasps in locations. And they found that they're actually building up populations. So there's more rearing facilities that need to be ramped up. You know, it's a slow process, going through the planning and making sure that you can contain the insects to do beneficial good. And I know of releases that have taken place in Baker still. So that's, it's pretty scary when it's that close. But they've got a pretty serious population. Kern County is not fully quarantined, but that's the only thing, that buffer that's keeping us from the spread easily north. We've got almost 11,000 of these yellow panel traps in Tulare County. And some of them are for glassy and sharpshooters for the Pierce's Disease Program. Some are for the Asian citrus sillid, but they're all checked for Asian citrus sillid. And some of them are put out by the California Food and Ag, and some of them are ours. We still have residential treatments. One went on last week in the Cutler area. And there's this, any, a residential is considered under 25 trees. And we've even had people cut down a tree or two so they could get that treatment rather than doing it themselves if they weren't capable. And it consists of a foliar application to kill the adults and then a more long-term method of soil drench and then watering it in. And it, there was a little bit of a challenge with, you know, severe droughts we had over the last couple of years. But they're quite effective and can give, you know, depending on how much water, three to possibly six months of protection to get the nymphs and the eggs because they're going to continue to hatch.
Ma'am?
Uh huh.
Is that a systemic spray that would, as in treating?
The one that's put into the ground, yes.
Okay.
It's taken up by the roots and it stays there. And it's similar to something you'd put on your rose bushes. In California, because of the warning signs the citrus growers have had, they developed a system where there's a statewide coordinator who looks at the residential treatments and tries to time them as close as possible with any citrus that may be in the area. So we've got two grower liaisons here in Tulare County. One takes kind of essentially the north half and one takes the south half. And they work with pest management team leaders, which are growers, who, here's a map of our citrus belts. And they tried to divide up the citrus blocks in roughly the same amount of acreage. So it would be manageable for one neighbor to call up and say, you know, we found sillids, you know, half a mile away. And so we'd like to do a treatment and try to get it on within a two-week time period, preferably sooner. So the ag commissioner's office is involved. But once you enter any quarantine, whether it's exotic fruit flies or the Asian citrus sillid, the California Department of Food and Agriculture takes over a lot of the aspects. But we still do trapping. We check all incoming packages at UPS and FedEx. And the border will send us paperwork that we've got incoming shipments that need to be inspected, so they're held upon arrival. Our citrus nurseries have all of their mother trees where they get their buds and their increase blocks and their baby trees that they sell to growers under screen. And that's an incredibly expensive endeavor for any citrus nursery. But they're able, once they're under screen and certified by the USDA, they can ship out of state to other countries. So it's a pretty neat system. We check at flea markets for fruit that shouldn't be there. But we have a new responsibility. The Citrus Pest and Disease Committee has requested that through a contract agreement with CDFA, it would provide funding through grower assessments to, for us to police the bulk citrus tarping of loads. So fruit coming from the field, whether it's going a half a mile in the packing shed or 500 miles, needs to be tarped in certain ways. And we'll be checking those loads. And there would be a contract agreement we bring to the board, hopefully sooner rather than later, perhaps within the next month. And we don't, you know, we submitted work plans. We don't, we don't quite know the scope of the work yet and whether we can do all of the work with existing staff. Because when you're taking people out of one area, you know, you're missing inspections in another. Our export program, being the number one exporting county, is really critical that our packing sheds get timely inspections. Supervisor Crocker asked me to talk about abandoned grows. We occasionally will have a citrus grower who said, you know, at this intersection of this avenue and road, there's an abandoned grove. And the state of California defines that as one that hasn't received irrigation or pest control or has been harvested in the last two years. But unless you watched a block intensively, it's very difficult to prove. We try to ask our local inspectors to keep an eye on locks for us because we've got satellite offices with many inspectors doing their normal work. So they have access to driving to and from packing sheds. But what we've found, pretty good results with, just one recently in the come-in-the-city limits of Lindsay is I sent one abatement letter and there was a pretty shabby grove that wasn't taken care of. And it was, I think, an illegal pot growing onsite also. But that looked like the trees were pushed and removed. So it was pretty successful. But we have folks that have lost wells. And so, you know, they lost their water source. We have, you know, older citrus growers who pass away. They leave the property to their wife who has no concept. And a lot of times, they're helped by neighbors. But funding is sometimes a problem with, you know, tree removal and chipping. If you can get that done on your property and have a place for the biomass has been a problem this past year. So we, I brought a bunch of brochures that the Citrus Pest and Disease Committee provides, you know, related to what a farm labor contractor needs to know about making sure the leaved ashes out of the bins, what homeowners need to know. So I'm going to leave them here for the city to just have out if anybody wants to, to take advantage of those. So, you know, all the things I talked about, you know, just one break in the chain is going to cause us serious problems. But Beth Craft and Cardwell, who's really super resource for citrus growers through the university system, thinks we, you know, probably already have HLB here, but it's just a matter of detecting it. All right, thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Just a question about, again, so as I understand it, then if you have an abandoned grove, openly, there's the ability to force the matter? Is that right?
There is.
You're probably voluntary compliant, but in case they don't voluntarily comply, the county can step in and actually do the enforcement itself and cover the cost?
There is, eventually. I know of one case where it went that far. And, but it was well-publicized in the big agricultural newspapers down in San Bernardino County. And I found out that it was county-owned property. So that's much easier to do rather than dealing with the angry owner of a property. But yes, it is possible. And I know there are growers, you know, that would love us to pursue that.
Any further questions from board members?
Just a comment.
Sure.
Thank you. I think it's very timely that we look at this. I mean, we, you know, citrus industry's 800-plus million in Tulare County this year. And the previous year was over a billion. And, you know, I, I don't think that this isn't going away. And so we're going to, I think, in the future, have to look at this in the various aspects. So I'm glad that you provided the context. And I think from my experience, there's, there's quite a bit of packing houses in our area that they have fruit elsewhere that they bring up from Southern California. Or they have sister houses, they have another house, Little Park and Craftmore. I mean, they've got a large facility down south. You know, Limonera, I know, has a lot of product up here that they take down south. And that's probably not as much of the issue as the fruit that's coming from Southern California.
Tremendous amount of hitchhikers. And you could just see it on the map with Highway 99, the juice plants. Because we get product from the desert that's stripped from the field. And so it hasn't gone through the washing labs process that it brushes them off, the sillids off. So it's, you know, with 71 citrus packing sheds in our county and all but one of the major juice plants, it's coming.
What about Arizona? Is Arizona seen any?
They, they have, I believe they're totally quarantined because their citrus area is smaller than ours.
Yeah. Are you looking to retire in Arizona?
No, but I know, I know, we get oranges into the juice plant out there. They're definitely all of them from Arizona, so they're coming from all over.
Any further comments or questions from members of the public? All right, well, hey, let me know before you start bringing those crazy wasps from Saudi Arabia because of Pakistan.
I'm kind of, you know, I'm allergic to bee stings, as you're saying. They're really small.
If I get stung by a wasp, I'm going to be pissed at you, Marilyn. I'm just saying.
The researcher who went to Pakistan where it's 120 degrees and he took his wife and that guy deserves a raise.
Marilyn, if you get a box of those wasps, I'll take one. I know where he lives.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Marilyn. All right, so that concludes item 11. Thank you for that great presentation, Marilyn. Next, we will take up item number 12, which is a request from the Agricultural Commissioner to receive a report regarding the county's nut theft ordinance and potential changes to improve its enforceability. Marilyn?
We grow five different nut crops in Tulare County. Almonds, pistachios, walnuts, pecans, and Ethan hazel nuts. And together, the farm gate value is three-quarters of a billion dollars. And that's not counting the value-added products. We've got roughly 40,000 acres of walnuts. And because of the way they're harvested, they're particularly prone to theft. You go through the season, we have Chandler variety. And occasionally, the nuts will be left in a window overnight. I've seen less and less of that, but just because of the theft problems. But it is state law that anybody transporting or selling an ag commodity, raw ag commodity, is required to have proof of ownership. Whether you're a grower who can prove that they own a property by their pesticide permits, a certified producer's certificate, you know, showing on an APN number or a tax roll that they own the property, that is not the issue. And they should be able to harvest without any kind of impediment by those ordinance. But it's the non-growers who are folks that are not the producers of those walnuts, who might be a gleaner, might be an employee of the farmer. And in some cases, it could be somebody with a drug problem. People that just decide that, you know, they're going to help themselves to a couple hundred pounds of walnuts. But non-growers in custody of walnuts are required to have proof of ownership. And that's part of our current ordinance. That proof of ownership by state law requires very detailed information about the buyer and the seller, the vehicle make, model, color, and license plate number, the type of commodity, the variety, the type, what nut it is, almonds, pistachios, walnuts, it's usually walnuts, the weight, and then whether it's in shell or, you know, particular things that can identify the product. And most certainly, the location where, like, a gleaner would have gotten the product. A grower always knows his block, the address. So those are the types of information that are needed to positively identify a product. The current ordinance also set up a catch walnut buying period. As the Chandler harvest season winds down, we get grower input and our weights and measures division starts making calls to walnut growers. We have a list of about 12 that they call every year. And we give 72 hours notice after we come up with an average date through a press release, and then the cash buying can commence. And over the past five years that we've had this in place, we've seen theft go down. I looked through some of Gary Kunkel's old notes, and we had up to 150 to 160 theft complaints in any given harvest season. So we're down considerably from that. But in some recent meetings that Supervisor Vanderpoel had, there was a couple of concerns that came up. And they were the need for new enforcement options, tighter control over the proof of ownership certificates, improved paper trail for tracking nut thefts. And that came from Lieutenant Mark Kiss with the, we work with our ag crimes folks quite a bit. And additional ways to discourage the purchase of stolen nuts through cash sales. And the thing I've heard the most from growers is they don't like seeing the cash for walnuts or we buy walnut signs going up before the season gets started. Because they think it encourages people that, you know, will scope out orchards and they just don't feel comfortable with that part of it. So we have a series of recommendations that we were asked to provide. One of them is very simple, and it's to add the enforcement authority given in the Food and Ag Code and put that code section in our ordinance so that the ag commissioner can take administrative civil penalties instead of criminal. Because we feel that it's a better use of the sheriff's resources and skills because there's plenty of other act theft that takes place. We would like to require the use of, remember, 2012, we created a proof of ownership. It's a duplicate. It has a signed series of numbers that go to a particular grower so that if one of these is issued to a gleaner for every day that they're on his property, this can go to a buyer's location. And it should alleviate all theft because somebody with ill intentions or a drug problem does not have one of these proof of ownership certificates. The state law affecting junk dealers and metal recyclers The state law affecting junk dealers and metal recyclers has a couple of pretty neat items where they, when a seller of a commodity comes to a buyer, they don't allow cash sales. It's checks or money orders only and through that state law, they have a 14-day hold. We would recommend to impose a checks-only policy with perhaps a 10-day hold and eliminate cash sales for nut purchases. There's also some exemptions in the back of our ordinance that make regulating the ordinance very difficult regarding grower agents and cleaning activities. We'd like to eliminate three of those exemptions. We would take care of the very small grower that has one or two walnut trees, but they still want to be able to get the funding for a camping trip or something. We would issue one of these like we have in the past. There's very few of those folks, but we can take care of that by issuing another one of these directly out of our office. So some people do take advantage of that and it doesn't take much of their time. We would definitely want to impose a restriction on signage in advance of the harvest. And if you want to keep the annual walnut cash buying period, because we do have two locations that have cash buyers licenses and they're issued by the state of California and they're required by law to provide cash in return for a raw ag commodity at that time. There cannot be any delay. But prior to that walnut buying period, we'd like to see our buyers that have an agent's license or a processor's license to go with the checks only, with the waiting period and the thumbprint on the back of the, one of these or on a receipt. And either way, both types of buyers are required to keep their records for two years and provide them to the enforcement authority. And Jeffrey, did I miss anything?
No, you got it perfectly.
Secretary of Attorney, any questions from board members?
Well, I think the more you can do to weed out these bad people that are going out and doing this and with this paper trail, I think you're going to, you're going to weed quite a few of them out. They can't present the right stuff or they want to sell these walnuts and stuff and that should, that should help out immensely.
And we do want to get the nuts off the orchard floor because we've got pest concerns following spring.
Who tries to work it?
Was there not a concern expressed about being able to force the no more cash sales? I thought especially if they're licensed by the state as cash sale buyers, are we, does that not supersede the county ordinance or are we able to restrict it in terms of time and place or...
Those with an agent's license or a processor's license, we'd like to change the ordinance that says, you know, prior to that cash walnut buying period, they would be providing a check with a 10-day hold that can be mailed to the gleaner or the employee of the grower or whoever it is, or they can pick it up at the buying stations.
But the cash, we have to allow the cash sales to do hold the cash contracts, but licenses from the state of California, but we can restrict that period of the time.
Correct. And that occurs in other counties as well, up in the SAC Valley and a couple other spots here in the San Joaquin Valley.
Well, I would echo my colleagues' comments. I mean, I think we certainly want to try to tighten this up and protect growers and of course, as always, as little as possible with engagement in terms of our time and effort energy. I mean, so to the most, we're trying to do this in a way that is not time, you know, overly time-consuming to us and to the farmer and to the, you know, but trying to capture the bad actors and try to restrict this. It's not like we're having great success. You indicated we've come back, we don't have nearly the number, but you indicate what we're down to.
There was, I believe, 400 pounds on two incidents this year. We tend to have more growers who will tell us, well, I chased somebody off or I made them dump the burlap bag of nuts on the ground. So we have more of those than actual incidents where the sheriff has been involved. But...
But nothing like the 150 or so.
No. It was kind of a free-for-all back then, so it's definitely worked in our favor.
You know, I appreciate the presentation, Marilyn. Very, very quick turnaround from the few meetings that I've attended where concerns were originally expressed. I think these are some great recommendations for me of the recommendations that you put forward. I really like the concept of adding enforcement authority for the ag commissioner. No reason to overly burden an already burdened public safety department and the sheriff's department when we can add enforcement mechanisms to the ag commissioner's department, which has no burden whatsoever.
And I think that was...
But it's a, it's, it gives another arm of enforcement, another tool, and I think that's great. I like the checks-only policy with the 10-day hold and that's a great, great item. I like eliminating the exemptions from the ordinance. I think that's, I don't know why I couldn't let that happen in the first place. I like the small owners to continue to harvest with the proper permission. That's great. We have to change that definition and I think that's appropriate. And then I like the signage restrictions, so...
Basically, you like it all.
No, no, there's some points I don't think are absolutely necessary, but, you know, one of the points that I think I would want to echo or make that I have gotten from a few growers is I don't want to put additional burdens on the grower end of it because they already feel like they have enough paperwork, they have to do enough identification, verification of ownership, et cetera, et cetera, regulation, things that they have to abide by. So I don't want to make it an overly burdensome process for them in order to basically catch the bad guys or eliminate a few bad actors. But, so I think it's a little bit of a balance, but in general, I'm super supportive of this and I know that there's several individuals here who are going to want to comment as well. So thanks for a great presentation. At this time, members of the public who are interested, and I'll actually call in one because I know he's going to speak whether I call him or not in that same shotgun. And I'm going to put a very strict 2:59 on Sam. One second less than the two minutes because I know you'll take it, so.
First of all, I want to thank our chairman and the board supervisors for attending the luncheon that we had. Very informative. Thank you for speaking, Supervisor Vanderpoel. And I apologize to Supervisor Shackling because I did not acknowledge that she was there. I have no idea why I did not notice that she was there.
She's not easily to, easy to notice.
It's not what I'd been told. So I would like to tell you that I've been, I'm a processor. We have a plant at 276 South Mariposa here in Visalia and I actually own two hats. I'm a grower and I'm also a processor. So I've seen both sides of the spectrum. I'm also involved in a lot of property in the city of Visalia, which we're currently farming in walnuts. So we've seen a lot of theft and you're absolutely right. What we find is people are going in there with burlap bags, buckets, and then we call the law enforcement folks and they go out and 99% of the time, you know, they have a bucket of walnuts and it's people who are trying to get walnuts maybe for baking, maybe for using to sell, regardless. I've seen more of it when the price was about $2 a pound, not as much now.
Baking's so much more important now.
Different, different market. But we take the stand of prosecuting. We don't call the police department or the sheriff's department out so that they can come out and have something to do that afternoon because they have plenty to do. So we always prosecute and we find it difficult because of the laws, the laws that are around us. So I'm very, very, very conscious of this and some of the things that were said tonight, I am basically, I support everything. The two issues that I have found to be a problem are the signage. It's like anything else in this world. When you advertise that there's cash available, then the wrong people are going to go get it. The system of harvesting walnuts is they're shipped from the tree onto the ground and they're put long rows, like a line, and it's really easy to take a shovel and put those in the back of a pickup and basically shell them and sell them. So what I'd like to see happen is the signage not go up. I'm being called by David Case every year from the ag commissioner's department. I have to commend Marilyn that this is a great ordinance that she put into effect and it's helping. It is helping. And with your help tonight, putting this ordinance through, we're going to eliminate about 99% of the theft. The signage should not go up until November 15th or the date when your office is calling and saying, is the Chandler harvest finished? There are other varieties besides the Chandler, but Chandler makes up about 60% of the variety in Tulare County. So once that's finished and we're all done, then the cleaners are going to go out and you, the grower lets his employee do it and there's never an issue, but you always have that extra person that's out there and they're actually stealing and taking and selling. It's like the non-fairson metals in the farms. So I'd like to see the signage go away until November 15th. I'd also like to see the cash go away. I don't want to see go away, and I know I'm running out of time here, is the system that we have that's buying these walnuts from the small growers. These folks are in business. They're here to make a living. They inject money back into the economy. I don't want to see this program go away where they're actually buying the walnuts from the public. What we need to do is regulate it. I love the fact that we're going to put another official out there. I love that. That's great because we need to enforce it. We need to find the folks that are bringing the walnuts in that don't have identification. Those are the ones that are problem child. The ones that have the ID, 90% of the time, they're not a problem child. So what we need to do is work on signage. We need to forget about cash. I love the 10-day hold. This is perfect. I know it's going to be a burden on the processors, they're paying the folks, but it's going to eliminate, sell the walnuts, get the cash, go buy beer because that's what's happening or drugs. So I want to tell you, I would like to make those certificates more available, Marilyn. I'd like to see them available to the growers because half these growers don't even want to fill them out. They come to my office and ask me to help them fill them out. So if I can get some of those and more in abundance than just one or two, I'll help the growers and make things a little bit more efficient. On the notification that I got that was on the line, just one thing, the violation is $500 for the first violation and then it says between $100 and $1,000 for the second violation. I don't want to see the $100 in there because the second violation could be $100 and the first violation is 500. I don't think we're sending the right message, so.
That's in state law and I think it's odd also, you know...
Also, that's, we have to follow that law because it's a state mandated law?
We can develop our own matrix, you know, to, but those are...
But if we have discretion, I mean, if you're, if you're making, if someone's got a prior conviction, there doesn't mean stop them from making that.
And I think this is, you're taking the recommendations for tonight, so maybe bringing that back with a higher penalty for the second theft they caught. Yeah, I agree.
Those are the issues, the signage, the cash. We get those out of our system, we're going to be scot-free. And I agree with everything that has been brought to you today. And again, I want to thank every one of you. We brought this to you in November of last year. This is March and we're already hearing it. I commend you. I absolutely commend you. And before I leave the podium, my wife always gets mad at me. I want to remind you that on April 6th, there's a project in Visalia, California, this residential over-commercial. It is the first retrofit of its kind that's ever been done in Visalia, California. It will be open for your viewing that day. I want you to all try to make it. It is an absolute unbelievable development. My wife, Marlene, is here tonight. She's the one that planned it all. She's picked out the colors. You have to see it. Thank you again for taking out your time.
Thanks for the private shotgun commercial.
Link's Men's Wear Store has been converted into two businesses and residential. Sam, it's not the first time because you did it already over Chelsea Street.
We did one unit where I bought the Toggy Ranch building in Visalia and we converted residential to that one. And then I bought the Link's Men's Wear building and we converted that upper story to a residential development.
You're way past your time now. I went to your first open house and sure will come by.
But Sam, you know how much I love signs.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
I just want to put a wall of cookies.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak regarding this agenda item? Or has Sam pretty well captured all of the thoughts and comments of any person in this room?
Jim?
Yeah, sure.
Marilyn, they're going to put this together and bring it to us as a board...
At a future, Marilyn. Have you got enough?
It would be a set of two public hearings. One could be on consent, but...
To open.
Yeah, we would plan to bring this to you for the first meeting of the ordinance amendments on March 4th.
Perfect. Perfect.
We keep this moving.
Let's move very quickly. Thank you for that kind of conversation. Great job. Any, any further questions or comments?
Just a comment. I just think it's really important that this is grower-driven and processor-driven and so, you know, we just keep that in mind and I'm glad to know that the sheriff's department has been involved with this as well.
So I were taking this up at an evening meeting, you know, so we can involve the public and growers as much as we possibly can. Any further questions or comments regarding this? Last bite at the apple.
At the walnut.
At the walnut. All right, seeing none, I will...
Let Pete sort them.
After this, yeah, Pete's three at the walnut farm. All right, after that, we're going to, we're going to conclude the last item on our open session of our board meeting council. Do we have a meeting for closed session?
I don't think so.
All right. That concludes our evening meeting here in the city of Lindsay. Thank you for attending this evening. This meeting is adjourned. Anybody interested in coming next Tuesday at 9:00 AM, you're invited to use our normal way.
Sam, thank you, Sam. And thank you, Andy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. How's it? Yeah. We've lived in...
Yes, I've seen this. Thank you so much, Supervisor. I appreciate it. Don't worry about the...
Don't worry about it. No worries. That's a simple thing.
The last thing we want to do is postpone. Good. They were all prepared. So far, I can't find a technical way to stream it yet, but I got a team working on that. I mean, we could, we could roll a fan out here.
I know. I wish I would have.